Everybody, we are gonna start the meeting now, so we'll begin with a call to order and roll call. Chair Goss.
Present.
Vice Chair Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Present.
Commissioner Sarkisian.
Here.
Commissioner Noble.
Here.
Commissioner Swab is not here at the moment. Um, we have a quorum. Thank you. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, first, we just need to start with the approval of minutes. We have the approval of two sets of minutes. The first one are the regular meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission from August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. I need a motion and a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next, we have um, a, the regular meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission for October ninth, twenty twenty-four. Motion and second.
I move to approve the minutes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, and next, we have an announcement from Jason.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. For those in attendance this evening, there's a couple of housekeeping items I just want to address. I know we have a large uh, attendance tonight. There was a couple of items that were on the agenda, so if you are here for the Keno subdivision, that item has been pulled in its entirety. That particular project has been re-noticed in accordance with the state statute as well as the city's ordinances. It was brought to our attention at the last meeting that no one had received notices back in March of this year regarding that preliminary plat. Upon our investigation, we did realize that it was, that it was agendized. There was no notice posted. There was also no mailer sent, and I received confirmation this past week that there was also no uh, ad run in our daily publication, the Daily Miner. With that being said, it actually null and voids the actions that were taken, so the preliminary plat and ultimately the final plat are being re-noticed. Those items will come back at a future agenda. They will be heard on November twenty-seventh for the preliminary plat. And then the preliminary plat and final plat will go to the City Council on December third. So if you're here for the Keno subdivision, those particular items will come back at a special meeting November twenty-seventh for Planning and Zoning, starting at same time, five o'clock, and then back to a regular City Council meeting, starting at five o'clock on December third. The other item that I wanted to address is, I know that the county today had a, a meeting regarding a rezone. If you are thinking that was part of any action that's taking place tonight, it is not. It was an application before the county for their review of a change of zone that dealt with another project site. It's not part of any of tonight's agendas, and it's not part of anything that we're gonna hear or listen to this evening. It's outside the city boundary, so the city would not have any jurisdiction over it as well. So just wanted to give that to you, so if you're here for either of those two items, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the agenda. But if you're here just for those and you didn't want to stay, I wanted to at least let you know that. Lastly, we are taking a couple of items out. We're gonna take a couple of items out of rotation tonight, so we're actually gonna hear the pre-plats first. They are later in the agenda. But that way, we have an opportunity to hear what you have to say. Hold up there.
I can't hear you.
I'll, I'll pause.
Yeah, coming up in a few days.
Are you still doing the Black Rock?
Yes, we, we will be doing the Black Rock subdivision, which is the preliminary plat, as well as preliminary plat for Kingman Crossings. Those two are on the agenda this evening. They will be taken out of order, so they will be heard first. So that way, if you are here for those items, they will actually be earlier on the agenda as opposed to later in the agenda. Kingman Crossing preliminary plat is on the agenda this evening, yes. Yes. It was the Keno subdivision. That's the only one that's being pulled.
I think they all were.
We're not understanding what being said. Kingman Crossing's on the agenda or not?
That is correct. Keno, the Keno's. The key, there, there's, there's multiple items. The one being pulled is the Keno subdivision, not Kingman Crossings.
Keno.
Keno.
Keno. Is Kingman Crossing on the agenda?
Yes.
Everybody here got him was not, the ones that left, even these people, just that. They thought it wasn't.
It didn't sound that way.
I, I tried to, tried to make it as clear as possible. The Keno subdivision is the only one not on the agenda this evening. Correct, because again, we pulled them before the agenda got processed, but it was noticed.
All right, well, we're gonna get started again. Um, first, I have the consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the commission should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The commission may not respond to speakers during the call to public. The commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. I know a lot of you guys um, filled out these forms here, um, but if you are going to discuss an item on the agenda, you need to wait till that agenda item is addressed. This is just an opportunity for people who have a general something that they want to bring up that's not on the agenda. So if somebody had one of those, feel free to come up, but if it's for an agenda item, we'll hold those till we get to the item. I don't think we have any of those then. All right, so I'm gonna close public comment, and we are gonna start with new business. The first one that we are gonna do is SB two-two dash zero 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 one. That is the pre-plat Black Rock subdivision, track six zero five three. All right. Do we have a presentation?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Pull the microphone down.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm here to present subdivision case SB twenty-two zero 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 one for Black Rock subdivision, track six zero five three preliminary plat. The property owner is High Desert Land Holdings LLC. Uh, Representative Travon Pennington and the applicant Mohave Engineering and Associates. Peter Profit is the engineer. Requested action is to approve a revised preliminary plat for Black Rock subdivision, track six zero five three, subdividing approximately seventy-two point three zero acres into two hundred and thirty-five lots within the R-one-six, R-one-ten, and R-one-twenty zones, resulting in a density of three point two five dwelling units per acre. This property is located north of Walupai Mountain Road and east of Yavapai Drive. Um, here we have an aerial view of the site. It's comprised of two large parcels currently. And here we have a proximity map. The large star with the red outline and yellow is the location of Black Rock subdivision. I've added the city admin building so that you can see where it is in proximity to us now. And I've also added the existing fire station number four, which is next to Walupai Elementary School, and the proposed location for fire station number five, which is behind White Cliffs Middle School. Here is a zoning map of the parcel. As you can see, there is R-one-six zoning on the western half of the parcel. R-one-ten on kind of the eastern portion, and on the far eastern portion bordering the adjacent subdivision is R-one-twenty zoning. The general plan designations for the site are low-density residential, which is one to two dwelling units per acre, and medium-density residential, which is three to eight dwelling units per acre, which again is a proposed um, three point two five dwelling units per acre for the overall subdivision. The R-one-six zoning has a six thousand square foot minimum lot size, and the lots in that portion of the subdivision range from six thousand square feet up to twenty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-five square feet is the largest lot in the R-one-six zoning. The R-one-ten zoning is a ten thousand square foot lot minimum. Lots range from ten thousand square feet to twenty-five thousand one hundred and five square feet within that zoning designation. And the R-one-twenty zoning designation has a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet, and the lots in that portion of the subdivision range from twenty thousand square feet to thirty thousand eight hundred and thirty-three square feet. And here we have the proposed preliminary plat that we're discussing this evening. The overall site and layout. There were some requested exceptions to the approval. Exceptions allowed under the subdivision ordinance subject to approval by Planning and Zoning Commission. Blocks two and three, these are each over one thousand three hundred and twenty linear feet, and each contain a single tier of lots. A petition of exception has been requested for single-tier lots and blocks exceeding one thousand three hundred and twenty linear feet. No staff objection was received. A petition of exception was also requested to eliminate the requirement for a minimum ten-foot-wide dedicated parcel or right-of-way for pedestrian convenience in blocks greater than one thousand three hundred and twenty feet in length, and no staff objection was received to that request either. Analysis of the exceptions. The requested exceptions were found to be in general compliance with the following criteria. The granting of the exception will not be detrimental to public safety, health, or welfare, or injurious to other property. The conditions for which the request for exception are based on are unique in that they were site-specific constraints that dictated the overall design and layout, including topography and existing development. The exceptions will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance, general plan, or official map. Infrastructure analysis. The subdivision has been designed and reviewed by the staff with respect to project infrastructure, including water, wastewater, and drainage. Water is served via an eight-inch water service located in Yavapai Drive adjacent to the site. Required extensions into Walupai Mountain Road are also required to be eight-inch. Sewer is available in Yavapai Drive, and extensions are required to connect the project site. Each phase has been designed to have a retention area, which will be dedicated to the city for drainage purposes. Drainage parcels are also indicated as open space, which is required pursuant to the original ordinance, which approved the zoning map change, which was ordinance fifteen twenty-three. The site was posted with signs and property owners within three hundred feet notified by mail and public notice, published in the Kingman Daily Miner. As of the staff report, only one letter of opposition had been received from the public. Additional correspondence has since been received and provided to you this evening for consideration. The city and outside agency comments were all addressed within the staff report and conditions of approval for the project. So in conclusion, the, the lots meet the minimum lot width, depth, and area as prescribed by the zoning code and in accordance with the zoning, which was established on the project site February sixth, two thousand six, by ordinance number one five two three. The subdivision has been designed to extend and incorporate the necessary infrastructure as it pertains to water, wastewater, and drainage, so as to not impact the city's services or surrounding properties. The subdivision implements the general plan's LDR and MDR designations, which prescribes a density of one to two dwelling units per acre for the low-density residential and three to eight dwelling units per acre for the medium-density residential. And as proposed by the subdivision, results in a three point two five unit dwelling units per acre. The subdivision facilitates the development of housing to support the housing needs of the city of Kingman and Mohave County. And based on the analysis and the conditions of approval, staff is recommending SB twenty-two zero 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 one should be approved to the mayor and city council. Recommended for approval to the mayor and city council, sorry. And if you have any questions, staff is available.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
I got a question. So this project was previously brought to us for a rezone, correct?
Correct.
Under the current lot layout, does that require a rezone?
No, it's adhering to the previously zoned designations.
Current layout meets the general plan, and we're basically just reviewing the pre-plat at this point.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any further questions? No? All right, thank you very much. All right, I'm gonna open this up for public comment. Just as a reminder, if you have um, something you'd wish to address with the council, you can come up to the front. Just state your name, please, and um, we have to keep to three minutes because there's so many people. Before um, we get opened up, though, let me um, offer Tyler the opportunity to come up if he would like to address us first. On behalf of the builder, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks, um, Commissioner and, and Board, um, or what are we? Planning and Zoning Commission, Commission. Um, my name's Tyler Engel. I'm with uh, the owners of the property, High Desert Land Companies, and also with Engel Homes in Kingman. Um, thank you for the, for the opportunity. We look forward to, to building another subdivision and um, providing housing in Kingman. We have had quite a bit of uh, negative feedback and kind of anti-growth, anti-development uh, feedback from the public, which has been a little disappointing. Wanted to share a few things from, from the builder's perspective. The city of Kingman is actually in a decline as far as new home construction and new home permits. Twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four have been significantly lower than the previous six years of, of building. So that's new home permits issued by the city in the, the city limits. And that's not for lack of demand for housing. We're, we're selling just as much or more as we have in, in all the previous years, but most of that's now outside the city limits, mainly because of how long it's been taking to get subdivisions approved and built in the, the city. Not necessarily all the, the city's fault. Some of that's our fault and engineering and things, but, but um, there's not un-fettered growth from, from my perspective. If you look at the, the building permits that are happening, we're actually in a, in a decline. So last year and this year, we're under two hundred, and the previous years, we were in the, in the three hundreds or the high two hundreds. So it has been going down. Last year in twenty twenty-three, the Mohave County paid for a housing needs assessment. And in that assessment, and it included unincorporated Mohave County and each incorporated city. And in that, it projected that the city of Kingman inside the city limits would need over eight thousand houses in the next twenty years to service the projected growth for things that are gonna happen. The interchange is gonna bring in new businesses and commercial. And so we, we need housing. Um, it, it needs to happen. And the, the general plan that was just approved, that champions infill development, which this is. It has development on all four sides, and it champions and, and almost begs developers look for opportunities to develop infill lots, infill land where, where there's development already and utilities already available. A last thing I'd mention is we also heard some pushback on that the infrastructure is not there and isn't planned for. But the city has been great with planning for infrastructure. We have the general plan. We have the master traffic plan that just got approved last year. The master water plan, the master sewer plan. So all of those things contemplate our exact area and, and the greater Kingman area. And we try to conform to those, and we're willing to, to make those connections and, and upsizing of pipes sometimes as, as needed um, to, at the, the, the next step, which is the, the improvement plans and, and the final plat. And um, thank you, and I'm available for any questions that, that might come up.
Great, thank you very much. All right, if anybody has a comment, you can now please approach the podium. So um, I can go by order, but I'll have to ask everybody what they wanted to talk about because a lot of people didn't say which agenda item they wanted to discuss. So how about if you guys just come up to the podium, and I'll cross it off on my list when I hear you? And if I don't hear you, then I'll call you up. Does that sound good? Okay.
Hello. My name is Deborah Finch. I'm a homeowner in the Walupai Foothills area. Uh, that is one acre. And I feel that the density of this proposal is absolutely ridiculous. At the very least, it should be maintained, the one to two um, per acre. And I don't feel like you should change the um, zoning to the medium density. Uh, just now, the turn lanes are being established on Central and Seneca to handle the bottlenecks that we get off of the Walupai Mountain Road Railroad overpass area and the airway area um, with our only two accesses. I looked at the plan. The winding streets would have to be a nightmare for KPD ambulance drivers and the fire department uh, with very limited uh, entrances and exits. And we know we want timely access. Number three, the proximity of the closeness for houses, I believe, would increase a fire threat just regarding distance. Uh, two hundred and seventy-five homes, even if only half of them had two children, that would be two hundred and seventy-five children probably enrolled at Walupai Elementary School. I was an educator for forty years, and I can attest to those issues. When I see that the sidewalk issue ha, for pedestrians had been overlooked, think of all those children walking to school because they won't have busing because of the proximity to the school. I would hope you would build another children's park for all of these people coming in. And I do see one reservoir uh, that was dug out. But if anyone knows that's been in that area when we've had our monsoons and heavy rains, with those wonderful reservoirs that are around Kingman and for uh, water containment, we still have water running over all the curbs. And the density of the houses is also going to contribute to that. Uh, we still have no real grocery store on the east side of Kingman, as we all know. And so that creates even more of a bottleneck of traffic of people exiting to access grocery stores on the western side of um, Andy Devine. And um, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My name is Teresa Bockler, and I live in the Walupai Foothill Estates. And here we are again. We are not against growth in Kingman. We are against taking half-acre lots and turning them into four to six houses on an acre. That's what we are against. We've been through here, this before, multiple times. Please don't speak for us. Don't let this go through. Engel has multiple developments going on in the city with smaller lots, smaller homes, that are less expensive, that people can afford. So what can they do? Sell that seventy-eight point one eight acre parcel to somebody who will section it in half-acre lots? Or they can sell half-acre lots to somebody and have them pick their own builder. They don't want to necessarily go with Engel. But we, the people, have been here several times, speaking to you, saying, we don't want this. Not these tiny little homes next to a subdivision that we went to specifically because it felt safe. The lots are larger. We get to know each other, and we don't want this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michael Shainfus. I live on the corner of Yavapai and Whitehead, which is right in the middle of where this is all gonna start. We were here multiple times last year, and it did conclude last January by you guys turning this development down. And then the next month, the city council did also. So here we are back again. And the one thing I see that changed on the new proposal is the Dakota access that was required by the city at one point in all of this, and now it's gone. Uh, I was, I was told it was negotiated out. Not sure why. They need that Dakota access for fire and police emergency on that east end. Otherwise, all the, these five hundred and some cars are gonna all come down onto Yavapai, which is twenty-five miles an hour now, and it's already overcrowded with all the other new houses there. He's got fifty-five yet to build in that other subdivision, and now he wants to put all the small lots along our road, which again, like they were saying before, isn't fit with our neighborhood. And uh, so I'm not understanding how come Dakota got thrown out again. I guess it was a money issue for him and not a safety issue for the city and the people that are gonna live there. So, and the other thing is. is drainage ditches aren't green spaces for people to work in, hang out and play in. And that's all we get from this developer is drainage ditches. I'm not sure he's built or had one actual park built in all the thousands and thousands of homes that he's building in this community. You know, drainage ditches aren't acceptable for that. So I would just hope you would consider, you know, having him start over, making it bigger, put in a real park or a real green space, and make sure that Dakota gets put through like you all agreed at one point last February and November and October. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Penny Holden on Delaware Drive. I think you guys are putting the cart before the horse. You don't have the infrastructure here to take on five hundred more cars on Walupi Mountain Road. Putting a left-hand turn lane is not going to fix the traffic over there. It's not. You don't have the medical facility to take care of all these new people coming into this area. It's taken four to six months for anybody to get a new, get a doctor's appointment here. So you need to look at schools. You need to look at police departments or fire departments. We don't have the personnel that's going to be able to take care of the people. The crime rate in Kingman is rising by the day. And we don't have the police officers. We only have one police officer on that side of the railroad tracks that even comes up there. I've lived up there ten years, and I've never seen patrol up there. And Seneca is a raceway of sixty miles an hour going down it. And I've gone down to and complained and complained enough and does about it. So you guys are putting the cart before the horse. You guys need to get an infrastructure in place, and then you can build these houses. But you're putting another thousand houses up there off Walupi Mountain Road between that development and the one off Dakota and up there. So you're talking about two thousand cars that you're adding to that road. Tell me what you're going to do to make it a safe drive. There's two ways from that side over to this side of Kingman. And when you have an accident on one that's closed down, you're stuck. And I think you guys need to take that in consideration. Not just the roads going into these developments, but the roads even on Stockton Hill. All these new developments that you're putting in, it's going to affect every road in Kingman, not just Walupi Mountain Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Beverly Shane Foose. Do you guys remember me from last time? I just have a couple of questions. I spent years working for a large company, environmental and safety. And ingress and egress was always the big thing. Every room, I mean, even now in all your houses, your bedrooms, everything. And that was the same actually with a big manufacturing company with their lots or with the neighborhood. You have to have a certain amount of ingress and out. You can't just have everybody flow into one little exit. It's not safe. And I wanted to know, when you changed it so that the Dakota, Seneca, there would be no exit on the east side, did the, do you have actual sign-off from the fire department and EMS? Or do you just decide it's okay, we don't need that exit? That was my big question. I mean, do they, do they approve it? Do they say, oh, that's okay, everybody can flow out of those two streets down onto Yavapai? Or does somebody actually go and say, hey, do you have this approval?
Jason, can you address how our approval gets made by the emergency departments and such? They all write off on these decisions?
Certainly Chair, House Commissioners. I'm actually making a list to respond to all of the questions at the end.
Okay, perfect.
If we want to wait, and I'll just, I'll hit them all at one time.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then my second question, because you know, right now, Yavapai floods pretty regularly. The mud flows across, it gets wet. I mean, we live there on the corner of Yavapai. And the water, just, it's like a river running down that road. So are you going to be putting, when you get the streets in, it's going to flow faster. Yeah, there won't be the mud, which is nice, but it's going to flow faster because you've got streets. You've got blacktop. Are you going to put in culverts under Yavapai? Or will it just be the rain still just pouring across the road like it does now?
And Jason will write that down, too.
Got that noted.
All right.
Got it.
Thank you. Those were my only two questions.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right. It looks like I have a Leo down. I don't know if you're talking on this agenda item. Yes. The other one, okay. And what about James Hansel, the other one? And Nancy Lee Allen? Okay. And Paul Lewis, the other one? Okay. And Dawn Nope? All right. So does anybody else have anything they want to bring up before I close public comment? All right. I see nothing. So public comment is now closed. Jason, do you want to just quickly address some of those for us?
Thank you, Chair, House and Commissioners. So just with respect to the questions that we heard this evening, let me first clarify. There is no rezone with this project tonight. The zoning has been in place. It's been in place since two thousand and six, and it allowed for a transition from essentially the west to the east that allowed for R one nine, R one six to the R ten and to the R twenty. So allowing for six thousand square foot lots, ten thousand square foot lots, and twenty thousand square foot lots as you go across the project site from the west to the east. So again, there's no rezone associated tonight. All of the lots that have been designed with the subdivision, and that is one of the changes, and that's why the applicant is back this evening. The applicant heard the concerns that were brought back here in January of this year. Ultimately, before it went to the city council, the application was pulled and withdrawn by the applicant. So that way, they could go back, redesign their subdivision, so it was in compliance with the existing zoning. So there is no rezone this evening. With respect to the density, the density allowed on the site, and I guess that's where we get back to, is under the general plan and under the existing zoning, the development can occur by right. And as long as they don't build the site greater than what the density allows, they would be in compliance with both the general plan and the city's zoning ordinance. So when we look at one to two dwelling units and three to eight dwelling units to the acre across the project site, that would allow them an average of five dwelling units of the acre, and they're providing three point two five. So they're actually underbuilding the site as compared to what would be allowed under the general plan. Access is reviewed. Access is reviewed not only by planning and zoning, but our fire department as well as our engineering department, so that way we ensure that we have adequate access across the site, as well as to ensure that we have access to our collector and our adjoining roadways that's sufficient to handle the traffic. The applicant is required to prepare a traffic impact analysis or a traffic memo. Those are also reviewed by our engineering department and found to be in compliance with the city's standards. We wouldn't be here this evening if we weren't able to get to that point. With respect to schools, I know schools are able to ensure that we have enough for the children in the community. The school district reaches out on an annual basis. They ask us for the number of subdivisions, the number of lots that have been approved. They actually go back and they do their school planning. So they have their own school facilities, their own school planners, and that's how they determine what schools are required or what schools are necessary. And as of course, as a lot of you are aware, we have the public school system. We also have charter schools as well as other school facilities to serve the children's needs and educational needs in the community. With respect to parks and open space, the city's subdivision ordinance does not require any specific number or amount of open space to set aside. This particular project does handle the drainage across the project site with nine parcels. Those parcels are dual-use, so when they're not inundated with stormwater runoff, they can be utilized for open space purposes. Addressing the lot sizes, again, the lot sizes are done in accordance with the allowed zoning. So you have the half-acre lots along the easterly side of the project site that are more conformance with the larger lots further to the east. And again, you get the smaller lots as you go back towards the west. These are all in accordance with the existing and adopted zones. Dakota access that was brought up this evening, Dakota access was looked at by both planning and zoning. It was looked at by fire, and it was looked at by our city engineers. I can tell you, when I came on and I started looking at this project site, I did want to go back and revisit what, how, why are we not looking at Dakota, only to come to find out that the topography, the constraints and the drainings that runs through there would actually be inundating any type of fire or emergency access. It would actually prove out to be less safe at the end of the day. So those are the reasons why Dakota is no longer part of this project for an access, and it is for drainage purposes only. Infrastructure, as with any project that gets developed in the city, as they're coming through and they're subdividing the property, they are required to put in their infrastructure. So they are putting in water, sewer, wastewater, infrastructure that will connect to the existing city system. Those systems have been adequately sized accordingly. The general plan has already accounted for subdivision on this site, as well as the city's master plan for streets, sewer, and water. With respect to our fire service and police service, again, those types of facilities, those are regularly evaluated. Police services are based upon having a number of officers per the ratio of residents in the city. So that gets regularly evaluated as to what their needs are on the police department standpoint. All departments, not just development-related departments, look at these applications and provide us comments and feedback. So again, before we get to you this evening, these departments have looked at it to make, to ensure that they have compliance. The same thing with fire. So when we look at future fire facilities, future fire stations, we look at response times. We look at how are we able to serve it adequately from an emergency, both ingress and egress standpoint, but as well as meeting response times. I do have our engineer, our city, our interim city engineer here this evening, as well as one of our fire inspectors. So if there's any specific questions that are more related to their area of expertise, I'll certainly defer to them. And I think with the last one, I get back down to, and that was the Yavapai flooding. As development comes in upon this particular project site, there are improvements. So as improvements take place, you eliminate the flood runoffs. And again, we have nine drainage parcels that are associated with this application. Those will certainly accept all of the flow that comes from the subdivision. They are designed to accept it, hold it, retain it. It recharges the retention of water basins and then slowly evaporates, you know, as the warmer weather comes and the rain spot. I think I've addressed all the questions that I had. And if I have certainly missed anything, anything from the public, I'd be more than happy to address that.
As far as Unisource goes, I'm dealing with the corporate commissioners and the Unisource about rate increases. And part of the reason
Okay, great. All right. Are you really willing to do questions right now?
I will answer this. If the question is regards to So I'll just answer the question in regards to utilities because it is across the board. We look at all utilities. They are routed to all of the outside agencies. So Frontier Communications, Unisource, ALO is now on the list. So all of our developments are routed to the utilities. They provide us feedback as well. They let us know if they need additional infrastructure, if they need easements to be established across the project site. All of that is taken into consideration. And again, they utilize the same subdivision proposals so they can give it to their future utility planner. So they're appropriately planning for future subdivision, or future substations to serve the needs of the community.
Okay. So, hold on one second. Let me, so if we're going to do this, then I need to reopen public comment. So how about if we just, hold on, Jason's going to take a seat for a second over there, and then let me reopen public comment. If you guys have a reply to Jason, you're going to have to come up and do them one by one again so that he can write them down and then come up, and then we're going to be done. So that's, this is the last chance, okay?
No problem.
All right. Just state your name again, and then
Mike Shane Foose.
Thank you.
My question is, again, on that Dakota thing, because I'm reading this right from Tavitz Pennington, that they were concerned about having to put that street in on Dakota. And they said they thought the three were fine. It was staff recommendation that Dakota be put in. Now he's saying, well, we reconsidered it. What really changed? The price? Because when we were here last time, he did bring up the price. He said, well, it's going to cost, well, we'll just put a bike path in. And we're all like, yeah, like, that's really acceptable. So why was it acceptable by the staff to recommend it earlier? And now you just say, oh, what the heck?
How about if we just collect them all, and then you can come back one more time, and then we'll just do it all in one foul swoop? So, okay, so you come on up and then...
What position or title is Jason?
Jason?
I'm the Development Services Director.
So he's in charge of all of this research and everything that we do. So he's the guy.
Well, I just want to say, based on what they could do and what is right and what they're doing, and my husband was a fireman and a policeman and a highway patrolman, and I was a teacher. And I don't feel like you people, if you do approve this, that you're listening to the true voice of Kingman and what is right. And I'm sad to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have anybody else who has a question? Okay.
My question was
Can you just state your name again?
It's Penny Holden in Delaware. The fact of Unisource, we have outgrown our grid to provide power to the people of Kingman. We are buying our power from California to service the people that we have now. And that's part of the reason why our rates went up and why we're paying four and five, six hundred dollar rates all summer, is because we have outgrown this power grid. And you guys are keep approving more and more homes. Where are you going to get the power from? We're going to continue to buy it from California to our bills are two thousand dollars a month to have power here? You have to consider everything that's involved, not just the people that want to make money. Because this is all about money. That's the bottom line. It's about money. Let's be honest. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Anthony Lemansky. And when you made a comment about having enough doctors, I'm here to say that's not true. And trying to get more doctors is more difficult. I served this community for over twenty years. Delivered a third of the babies in this community for twenty years. We don't have enough doctors, and trying to get them is rather difficult. And if we make it more difficult because of our streets, because of the cost of electricity, because of the lack of water, we're going to be in trouble. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are we good? Okay. I don't see anymore. All right. Come on up, Jason. I'm going to close public comments. So we're done for the night on that. And then Jason's going to address the people that had questions. And then we're going to move on to commission discussion. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commission. So going back to Dakota, what's changed? I wasn't here when the previous application came forward. I can tell you that when we looked at this application as it was revised, our fire department looked at where can they get access? They also looked at, do we have adequate access? And that was determined to be the case. We have adequate access. Would we have liked to have had a fourth point of access? Certainly. However, it didn't prove out to be something that could happen due to the topographical constraints that were there and the fact that it was already being served as a drainage area. So that is the reason why. So there was not a shift in what staff's recommendations were from the first one to the second time that this has come back. The shift really comes back to is, it couldn't be utilized, even when it was looked at the first time for emergency access. With respect to Unisource, Unisource is a private entity. The subdivision that's before you this evening, looking at what Unisource's ability to service or power the grid or where they get their power from is outside of the scope of this application, as well as the commission's review. It is up to the Arizona Corporate Commission. They do regulate the public utilities. Unfortunately, that's not something that is part of the purview of the subdivision itself. And then the last one, with respect to doctors, again, it's a private enterprise. So if you're looking to attract or, you know, being able to accommodate doctors in the city, the subdivision is not an application that would be, that would be something subject to that review. It's outside the nexus, outside the purview.
All right. Thank you very much. We really appreciate all your help, Jason. Okay. I am going to open this up to commission discussion and see what you guys all have to say. to say. Go ahead.
I have an issue with this whole project, because Wallapi Mountain Road, from Fripp's Ranch Road, up the hill is only two lane. You're gonna put a turn lane in at Central, or at Havapai and Central. Seneca is a two-lane road, Louise is a two-lane road, Havapai is a two-lane road, and Central's a two-lane road. We're putting all this extra traffic out here, and I still disagree with the police department, fire department on access. You go up there on Friday afternoons, or anytime around four or five o'clock in the afternoon, and it's very, very busy. And I just, I believe it should stay the way it is, one, one house, two acre, per acre.
If I can, Chair, Commission, there is no rezone associated with this this evening. By right, the applicant is avail, is, has the ability to develop housing, meeting the density under the general plan, and as long as the lots meet the minimum lot size for the R16 designation, they can have 6,000 square foot lots there, they can have 10,000 square foot lots for the area that's already zoned R10, and then 20,000 square foot minimum lots for the area that's zoned R20. So there is no rezone this evening, it is, they are building within the zoning that's already permissible, under the zoning code.
You can turn it down.
Jason, let me just ask you one more favor. For, for the benefit of the commission, could you just tell everyone what the actual point of law is that we are approving or denying?
So tonight, the commission's being asked to approve the subdivision, which is really just the layout, the streets, the lots themselves, with the sizes that are being proposed by the applicant, the infrastructure that's coming with it, this is a preliminary plat. So it is the overall initial stages of the subdivision. The zoning is existing on the site, so there is no rezone that's associated with it. The rezone took place back in 2006. That's what established the 6,000 square foot minimum lots on a portion of the site, the 10,000 square foot lots on the other portion, and the half acre. So tonight, you're just looking at the subdivision. Do we have streets? Do we have access? Do we have lots that meet the minimum lot sizes?
Thank you, Jason.
I got a favor to ask, Amy, could you put that, just so everybody has a visual reference? The colored one with the existing zoning? Yeah. So the, the bright yellow is R16, and the medium, which is the darker yellow, is the 10,000 square foot lots, and then on the east side, the beige, is the 20,000 square foot lots. That's the zoning for this, this project. It's, it already exists.
Okay, so just to reiterate what Jason said, so tonight, really what we're trying to do is look at the, the subdivision plans, and decide whether or not they look like they're in line with our, our plans for the city. Their, their right to do it is not something that we're questioning.
That is correct.
Their, their design in doing it is something that we can question.
Chair Goss, can I ask Jason a question?
Sure.
Yeah, Jason, regarding the, the properties that are to the south of this development, what is the density of them? Are they, are they residential ten, or what are, what is the designation of them?
So immediately to the south, you have commercial, that's gonna be fronting right along Havapai, or...
Or sorry, to the, sorry, to the west?
To, to the west, you have lots that are in a low-density designation, so you would have lots similar to a six to eight thousand square foot lot area. When they, when they were developed, they could have been certainly developed at larger lots, it just, the minimum lot sizes is what the applicant has to demonstrate this evening.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I got something.
Go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to, I appreciate everybody making their comments at the podium. There were some good comments, and I really liked the one, the cart before the horse, I don't remember the lovely lady that talked about it, but this is a preliminary plat, so what this is for is, is I think this is basically, we're approving to put something in place to possibly get more infrastructure in the area. So that's the way I'm kinda seeing this, preliminary plat, hey, this is coming, this is how we're going to improve our roads, this is what businesses that wanna come into the city will actually evaluate and say, "Hey, they're building this new thing that's approved," and potentially bring more infrastructure to our community. So I just, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Chair, may I ask another question of Jason really quick? Jason, do you know the, the chain of ownership of this parcel that's gonna be developed? Like, for instance, when Engel Homes purchased this? Was it...
That I don't know, that'd be, Engel Homes is here, they could certainly speak to it.
Okay. So, there, there used to be a development, I don't wanna say corridor, but there was like a, like some sort of an overlay area going up, going up this road, of Wallapi Mountain Road, in this area. And there were special, there were certain, like limitations on what could be developed here. And when I asked about it, when this came up last time, like, I found out only in arrears that it had been changed. Well, the reason why I'm bringing you up now, though, is because there's a history here of what was intended for this area. Perhaps you know a little bit more about what the city had specially set aside for this area, or what they intended to do with this little corridor on, on Wallapi Mountain Road.
Isn't that regarding the, the commercial? The front, the, the front edge along Wallapi?
It also mentioned residential, too. There were certain, like the character of the neighborhood, or something.
So, so the Wallapi Mountain overlay corridor is specific to the parcels that front Wallapi Mountain Road.
Got it.
It does allow for some residential development as part of that overlay. There are certain restrictions as part of that overlay, which also includes whether or not they can have direct access to Wallapi Mountain Road. So there are, there are additional requirements that go with it, but it would be for the properties that front Wallapi Mountain Road.
Understood, okay. Well, I'll just broach a comment here. I've heard from many people, not just on this, this project, but others, just the main concern seems to be the, the density of these subdivisions. And I brought this up last time this came up. I can think of no place in Kingman that isn't a better, isn't better suited to show off Kingman than, you know, the Wallapi foothills right now. We've got these sort of custom development homes that are on larger lots, it's more organically growing. And to put this right, insert this right in here, which is kind of our showpiece, it just, it's, it just seems like it's not in harmony with what the city wants to do. And I'm both here as like, just a resident, I don't live in this neighborhood, but I can kind of understand where these, these people are coming from. A lot of people are here because they're trying to get away from Vegas, or Phoenix, you know, and these cookie cutter subdivisions are just an eyesore to them, even though they're permissible. Maybe, maybe this isn't the best fit for this area. And maybe the developer, who's well in the right to, to build this thing, could meet the public halfway and do it all R110? I know that'll hurt the bottom end. All of us, well, all of us that attended the recent Planning and Zoning Arizona Meeting down in the, in Phoenix, we were treated to a, a developer pitching why we should pretty much never ask for entitlements, because it's always gonna be passed on to the, the person, the person that, that ends up buying a lot in their subdivision. That seemed kinda cynical to me, like, maybe, again, we could, we could make some subdivisions that are a little more interesting, a little less cookie cutter. So it's appeal to developers to maybe make something like horse property subdivisions, they're doing that, and like, have a city of all places, no grass, maybe we could get a little more creative, rather than, again, packing these houses in like sardines. That's my opinion, and I'm probably gonna vote against this, just because I'm... Thank you.
I like him.
Me, too. Thank you.
All right, you look like you have something to say.
I, I had a, I have a question for Engel. What, what is the timeline we're looking at on the, what is the projection? How long is it gonna be before you think you might break ground in that area? And how long is it gonna take to, with what you have in mind, how long is it gonna take to, let's say, sell this, or develop that piece of property? What's the time?
Gotcha. Yeah, we'd be planning, if we get the approvals and the engineering, to break ground, maybe the second half of next year. And so, so that's what it'll be looking like for the first phase. As far as for total buildout, it could be six years, six to 10 years, maybe, to tell it would be completely built out.
With the, with the other projects you've developed around Kingman, and it's a multi, multi, multi-year project, do you, do you see evidence of the infrastructure catching up to what you're doing in that area?
Yeah, so our engineers and the city's engineers talk a lot, so especially after this step, if the preliminary plat gets approved, then they have to do the improvement plans themselves, and our engineer looks at the master plans that the city has available. They ask questions of the engineer, are there bottlenecks, are there issues to serve the sewer, let's say, for instance? And, and in some cases, they say, "Actually, no, a mile away, there's a 400-foot section that's at capacity." And then we, as we've done in the past, have had to go pay to, to fix a bottleneck, for instance, or to make the pipe bigger. And so the engineers talk back and forth to make sure the services are adequate for anybody, nobody that was already there is gonna be harmed, and, and that the utilities will, will all work.
Do you ever find yourself being in the position where, after you have these discussions, you maybe change your, your plan a little bit, or you're train of thought to the way you're gonna develop that property?
Yeah, the plans, the plans change, they've changed quite a few times. We did buy this in 2021, and so because of the, the drainage, the, the city's drainage requirements now are more stringent than they used to be a long time ago. The, the road sizes are bigger, the sidewalks are bigger, things, things have changed since the previous owners had it. So we redesigned things to make all of that, that work, and, and it is a work in progress. If some big item came up that, "Hey, it, it won't work like this," then we may have to, to change the plan, but usually it materially stays similar from the preliminary plat to the final plat.
Okay. That's all I had, Chair.
Okay, thanks so much. All right, I have just a couple things to say that I'm sure will be very unpopular, but I'm gonna say them anyway, 'cause I guess that's what I do. So unfortunately, how development and can, you know, things tend to work in the world is that there have to be people before businesses. A business, a supermarket, is not gonna come into the area until there are plenty of people that are gonna shop there. You know, half the reason we don't have Targets and, you know, fancy restaurants and things like that, is 'cause there's not enough people just to, to do the base limit that they're looking for in an area. And so, nobody wants to be in that position, where there's people without resources, but that's kind of unfortunately how a lot of things happen, where, you know, a school has to see this many children in the area before they're gonna hire more teachers. They're not gonna hire a lot of teachers with the expectation that there will be children moving into the area. So it can be a difficult process, but sometimes the growth has to happen before the people are hired to, to do that. The other thing is that, just in general in Kingman, we have not enough affordable housing, is just the way it goes. And so, you know, having large lots and, and bigger housing would be great if people could afford to buy them. But we are needing affordable housing for people to, to live in. And so, you know, as a city, it's helpful to kind of look at the broad picture as well and say, "Hey, we, we do need housing, you know, we do need people to come in in order to have more things. We can't have more things before we have more people." So it, it's a little bit of a tricky medium that, that we're trying to negotiate here, and I'm not saying that, you know, it's right or wrong to do one way or the other, but it is just another side of the situation that we do need to keep in mind, because it's nice to have it all the other way, but it can't always be, you can't always have all the things before you have all the people. So, those are my two senses. Do we have any other comments? Do you have anything, Jed? Just thoughts?
What, I'm sorry, Chair.
Go ahead.
I have a comment I'd like to make. It was touched on briefly, that if this project goes in as planned, it's gonna put a strain on the, the ingress and egress of that area. Also, I was looking a little farther downstream, I was looking, looking at the intersection of Andy Devine and Wallapi. And there's been several occasions where I've been, let's just say, caught at that intersection during what I call Kingman's rush hour, and, you know, one time I remember there was an accident at that intersection, and how traffic was backed up, let's just say it was backed up to almost Central. And have we thought about what we're gonna, what the impact is gonna be of all the extra people on the road, dealing with that intersection during what I call the Kingman rush hour in the morning? I've heard people comment that it takes, you know, two or three times, they're, they're waiting for that light to cycle through, just on the way that the traffic pattern is now, without this added increase. Maybe Jason could address that?
So, so here's my, my question. For people who are concerned about the subdivision, what are some suggestions, right? Because we're here to, to approve this plat, or to not approve the plat, are there particular conditions that you are curious about, or is it just like a, a yes or no kind of thing? Because that's what we get to negotiate tonight, right? What we like about this particular plat, so...
I don't think Engel can handle this, I don't think the city can handle it, 'cause on that side, it's, you only have Airway and Wallapi Mountain Road going up that way. That's it. You got Eastern comes over to Airway, since they redesigned that, that's nice now, 'cause, but getting there in the afternoons, or in the mornings, when the kids are all going to school, Airway is terrible. And Wallapi Mountain Road is the same way, and I, I just can't, I just can't go forward with this.
Yeah, Chair Goss, Mike, sorry, Commissioner Blair, I, I agree with you. I take my kid to Emmanuel Christian every morning, and, you know, I'm usually piled up in traffic for 10 minutes, just trying to get back downtown. I'm also a little concerned, there's the, the ADUs, accessory dwelling units, which, you know, the city and just planning and zoning throughout the state is pushing, you know, with setbacks of two feet, you know, so basically you have another dwelling, fifty, you know, 50% the size of the main dwelling, in the backyards of some of these areas, you're talking a 6,000 square foot house. You know, I could see that exacerbating the, the traffic problems, but also just driving people completely insane, having strangers piled up next to them. I, just, the, the more dense we go, I, I see that being like a force multiplier for the problems that people have when they're living next to too many people. It's, it's what a lot of people come to Kingman to get away from. But to, to talk to Ms., to Chair Goss's point, I don't know, I, I think, I think we do want nice things here, but I think kind of what we have here isn't necessarily another Walmart or something, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's partially the community we built here and knowing people, and, and the history we have in this town, so what the developer might be able to do is address some of the park concerns. I've heard, you know, if, if Chair Goss, or sorry, Chair Schwab was here, she would probably make that case, "We need more, more parks," and I've heard some of the... people say, there was a, somebody wrote in a good comment about, um, about the Slaughterhouse Canyon, uh, byway, you know, maybe the developer could get involved with that. That would help me get to my kid's school in the morning. Um, or just the obvious one, looking at this map right here is R110. Why not make the R16 R110 and just throw a bone to the people here that are irate? I've seen these mo- people come out multiple times complaining about this. It seems like we're trying to tr- just cram it through. I understand it's well within their rights to do this, but at the same time, just, I don't think it's in the city's best interest to do this. You know, we're talking plans and things, just the vision for the future Kingman is this area, this type of development that we have right now, not more cookie cutter subdivisions. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. You guys have more thoughts to share with each other, or are we, are we going to start with a motion?
I have another thought.
All right.
There was a meeting this morning uh, by the county board, uh, the, uh, county planning and zoning. And it's, uh, it dealt with, uh, an area a little farther up southern. I think the, the boundary of that development was Cherokee and, um, oh shoot, I can't remember the, Diamond Spur. And it was a, a similar sized project. Was that approved? I, I didn't hear what the results of that meeting were this morning.
Yes, I was there. It's 550.
Okay, um, so that, that was granted?
Yes.
Okay. I was just curious, that's all. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I can't make a motion. I'd, I'd make a motion to disallow.
Nope.
All right.
I'll do it.
All right.
Um, I believe it meets the general plan. I believe it would cause growth and improved infrastructure in the community. So I'm going to move to approve. Public hearing request SB 22-0001, pre-plat Black Rock subdivision track zero, 6053 to approve a revised preliminary subdivision plat, Black Rock subdivision track 6053. Revised preliminary plat includes 235 residential lots and nine parcels on approximately 78.28 acres and is located north of east Walupi Mountain Road and east of Yavapai Drive.
I'll set you up.
All right, we have a motion. And a second, can I get a roll call vote? Chair Goss, approve. Vice Chair Blair?
Nay.
Commissioner Waters?
Denied.
Commissioner Quinn?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Denied.
Commissioner Noble?
Approved.
Motion failed.
Sir, so the chair, the, when a motion fails, it just means it's denied, goes to the council as a denial.
Okay. All right, so. Okay, so the motion was denied, but the motion is going to go to city council as denied, and then city council will make their decision from there. Do we know what night the meeting is?
This, this particular project will go to the very next ca- uh, uh, city council meeting, and that is on November 19th. So, uh, just, just short of a week from today. So, next Tuesday. That is correct, 5 o'clock next Tuesday here in the council chambers, city council meeting.
All right, thank you, Jason. Um, if anybody has any further questions on this, feel free to stay until after and they can discuss them more with staff. Um, but right now, we're going to move to the next agenda item, which is SB 23-0006, which is the Kingman Crossing pre- plat tract.
Liz, Liz, let all these people le- leave first.
I didn't do that, it went off. Just one blank. How do you do that? You're in Safari.
Chair, did you want to make a motion to take a break for a second? I saw Commissioner Waters stepped out. I was asking if she would.
Sure, do you guys, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn for a moment? I'll make one.
Just a recess.
I'm making a motion for recess.
Second.
You can do it on your own.
We lost a commissioner.
This meeting, um, the planning and zoning meeting of Wednesday, November 13th, 2024. Um, we are on agenda item 4B, which is SB 23-0006, which is the Kingman Crossing ple- pre- plat tract 1993. Do we have a presentation? Thank you.
Which one of these? This one or this one? Agenda.
Your internet's down. And then this right here, right?
Yeah.
Sorry for the technical difficulties there. This is a presentation for subdivision case SB 23-0006 for Kingman Crossing Track 1993 preliminary plat. Property owner is Pioneer Title Agency and applicant is Mojave Engineering. The requested action is to approve a revised preliminary plat for Kingman Crossing Track 1993, subdividing approximately 262 acres into 1,129 lots within the R16 zone, resulting in a density of 4.31 dwelling units per acre, located north of Interstate 40 and west of Prospector Street. Little bit of the project history, the site was part of an annexation of land into the city of Kingman on January 6th, 1992, under ordinance number 903. The RR zoning designation was applied to the property at that time. On August 2nd.
Can I interrupt you for just one second? Can I ask everybody to turn their microphones off who aren't speaking? Maybe that would help.
On August 2nd, 2004, the subject property was rezoned to R16 by ordinance number.
Stop muting the stream.
By ordinance number 1436. On August 2nd, 2004, preliminary plat for Kingman Crossing Track 1993 was approved by resolution number 4009. The subdivision consisted of 13 phases. Four final plat phases, track 1993A, track 1993B, track 1993C, and track 1993D containing 321 lots altogether were subsequently approved and recorded between 2005 and 2023. Here we have an aerial view of the site. As you can see, several of the phases have already been recorded and developed. And here's an overall site of Kingman, a proximity map just showing the city admin building where we are here tonight and its proximity to the subdivision. And also have the proposed fire station, number five, located on the map, and that's behind White Cliffs Middle School. Here's a map of the zoning of this site. As you can see, the site is zoned R16 with some adjacent commercial development. The general plan designation for this site is medium density residential with three to eight dwelling units per acre. The proposed density is 4.31 dwelling units per acre. And the minimum lot size will be based on the zoning of R16. It's a 6,000 square foot minimum, and the lots range from 6,000 square feet to 13,680 square feet for the largest lot. And here we have the preliminary plat. This is an overall of the entire subdivision with all the phases. And then it's broken down into sheets with each phase. The revised preliminary plat only seeks to revise phasing numerology and establish a new approval date as the previous extensions of time have been exhausted. No other changes are being proposed. As such, all blocks and lots comply with all standards as originally approved and in accordance with the subdivision ordinance, including the exceptions of a previous petitions of exception that were approved to allow certain blocks to contain only single-tiered lots, certain blocks to exceed 1,320 feet in length, and for certain blocks to be less than 400 feet in length per resolution 4009. All lots meet the required R16 depth-to-width ratios with the exception of previously approved to allow double-fronting lots on certain blocks under resolution 4009. Overall, the subdivision internal streets and connections have been designed to accommodate the topography and drainage. Four streets connect to Airway Avenue and two connections are provided to Prospector. However, there are no street connections provided to the west side of the subdivision. Drainage for this subdivision has been reviewed by engineering and appears to be in general conformance with the subdivision standards. There's an existing 12-inch water line in Airway Avenue. Sewer lines have been extended. Sewer lines have been extended into the existing phases of this subdivision per city engineer. The preliminary plat indicates that every phase has at least one drainage parcel associated with it to be dedicated to the public, except for drainage parcel F in phase K, which is being dedicated to the city of Kingman. A revised drainage report was submitted with this revised preliminary plat, and drainage appears to be in general conformance with the requirements. One drainage parcel is also indicated as open space. There's no mention of intent to develop as a park, but the staff report for the original preliminary plat made a recommendation for open space to include a recreation area, and there was also mention of the need for elementary school site. The site was posted and property owners within three-hundred feet were notified by mail, and public notice was published in the Kingman Daily Minor. As of the date the staff report was written, one letter of opposition and one letter of support had been received by the public, from the public. City and outside agency comments were addressed in the staff report in conditions of approval. So in conclusion, the preliminary plat has been designed in accordance with city zoning and subdivision ordinance, with the exceptions as discussed earlier in this presentation. The lots meet the minimum lot width, depth, and area as prescribed by the zoning code and in accordance with the zoning, which was established on the project site August second, two thousand and four, by ordinance number one-four-three-six. The subdivision has been designed to extend and incorporate the necessary infrastructure as it pertains to water, wastewater, and drainage, so as not to impact the city's services or surrounding properties. The subdivision implements the general plan, medium-density residential designation, which prescribes a density of three to eight dwelling units per acre, and as proposed, the subdivision results in four-point-three-one units per acre. The subdivision facilitates the development of housing to support the housing needs of the city of Kingman and Mojave County. Based on the analysis and findings contained within the staff report and the conditions of approval, SB twenty-three dash zero-zero-six shall be recommended for approval to the mayor and city council. If you have any questions?
Yeah, were there any conditions of approval?
There are.
Okay, can you just let us know what those are?
Yes.
Thank you.
The conditions of approval are the pre-plat shall be in compliance with the city of Kingman codes and regulations, including but not limited to the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, standard specifications and details, street and sidewalk rules and regulations, design and administration manual, and utility regulations. The final plat shall be in substantial compliance with the pre-plat, including general design, lotting, and circulation. The Kingman Crossing Boulevard cross-section shall be designed in accordance with Exhibit A as approved by the city council on April second, two thousand and twenty-four, having an overall right-of-way width of eighty-six feet with an additional forty-four feet dedicated as a separate lettered lot for drainage purposes. Twenty-five-foot chamfers shall be included on lot seventeen, block twenty-one, and lot nine, block fifty-four. There is an existing special flood hazard area located within the boundary of the subdivision. If there are any changes to the SFHA boundaries or to the base flood elevations within the SFHA due to site development, then a CLOMR, LOMR, submittal through Mojave County Flood Control District, and FEMA will be required to map these changes to this SFHA on the FEMA flood insurance rate maps. Approval of the pre-plat shall become null and void two years after the date of approval unless an extension has been granted for the final, or the final plat has been recorded. Prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant's proposed developer agreement shall be approved by the city of Kingman City Council, ensuring the design and construction, including applicable infrastructure associated with Kingman Crossing Boulevard is secured or an alternative agreement with the city of Kingman is in place to ensure the aforementioned improvements, i.e. cash deposit, subject to an annual review and increase of cash deposit based on the review and approval of the engineer's cost estimate to construct. Parcel J shall be dedicated to the city of Kingman prior to or concurrent with the recordation of phase F and G, whichever occurs first.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff? No? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open us up for public comment. I'm guessing the ones I have left are for this. So do we have the developer for this project here? Is that, okay, awesome. Do you want to come up and just address this again real quick? You don't have to.
Tyler Engel, again, with High Desert Land and Engel Homes. One thing I wanted to hit on is that I was pretty surprised by the last vote. It's hard as a developer to know where I can conduct business if I follow the city's rules, the city's plan, and the city's zoning and spend hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars, and then the city changes their mind and says, actually, never mind. Don't look at the general plan we just approved. Don't look at the zoning that's approved by ordinance. What are we communicating? Don't build in Kingman, build somewhere else. Don't invest here, we don't want growth. The city's spending fifty million dollars on the Rancho Interchange. Isn't that a signal of we want to invite growth? So pretty hard for me to know what to do. Point on a map where you want me to build affordable housing, because that's what we want to do. We want to solve affordable housing. That's what this is, more on the affordable end, R-one-six. Eighty percent of the people that walk through our door were the biggest builder in Mojave County. Eighty percent of people cannot afford a home on R-one-ten or bigger. They can only afford three-hundred-and-fifty thousand and lower, and that price of house can only be built on an R-one-six. That's just how the costs work out. If it's R-one-ten, they ended up being three-eighty to four-fifty, and it just slides up and up from there. This is an R-one-six area. There's like twenty people that live in Kingman Crossing right now, since we built the last three phases, that are nurses that work at the hospital, that I met personally, that I got to know when we were building their houses. That's the type of people that we're trying to build houses for. Laborers, a bunch of our subcontractors, they buy houses from us. And so that, Kingman does need affordable housing. Not everyone can afford more, even a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house or more. So we do need houses in Kingman if we want it to be healthy and continue to grow. On this one, in particular, it's been a four-year journey from the time that the city told us they wanted us to redo the preliminary plat. They wanted to do that because of Kingman Crossing Boulevard that goes through it. The previous developer didn't really have it fully designed and also for drainage. So we did a full traffic impact analysis. We actually used the same engineering firm that the city used for their traffic master plan, and we did a full drainage analysis, and the preliminary plat was tweaked because of that. Been a very long journey, but we're finally arriving here today. So yeah, I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. All right, I guess I'll just go off the papers I have here, and then if anybody wants to speak, they can come up also. So I'm going to start with Leo Gallegos, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, I'm at the Villas, I'm the HOA president there. And you know, we've, my concern is mostly the traffic. You know, the traffic, we only have really one way in. We make these homes, we need to get going on something else, because that's just not working. You know, and some of the problems can be resolved by changing the light sequences. There's also, when you're turning left from sixty-six onto Airway, they should have two lanes, there's enough room there for two lanes, that needs to be done. You know, you have some minor problems there, you have other problems like the Stockton Hill and all that. You know, and it's the same thing. And you know, it's just, the engineering isn't there, it just doesn't make sense. And there's other lights that, you know, you could do that unaware, because we do have a lot of congestion. You know, when I first moved here about five years ago, it was, speed! Not anymore. So anyways, that's one of my biggest concerns. My other concern is the water diversion. You know, we had, he, near his house, you have that video? Show him the video.
Can, he can come up after you. Let's just do it one at a time so that we can keep track of the thing.
Okay, yeah, no problem, no problem. Okay. And my other concern is crime. You know, we've had a couple of incidents around my neighborhood, and I just, I don't like it. I moved away from that big city thing, and I don't like it. So those are my concerns. It's, I know the city has to grow, I know that, but we need to make allowance, and we're kind of doing the, like that other lady said, the egg before the chicken, the chicken before the egg? I don't remember how that goes. But anyways, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. All right, next I have James Hansel.
Good evening, James Hansel. I know Engel says that we're building the infrastructure with these homes, but laying pipes and pumps does not make water. The Walupi Basin is already being drained a billion gallons a year faster than we're refilling it. We've turned away industry, we've made this area an irrigation non-expansion area as a result in two thousand and twenty-two. I don't know how we're getting, we're building all these homes without the water. I know the plans were made in two thousand and four, I guess I'm twenty years late, but I moved here, as Commissioner Waters said, you know, to get away from the Phoenix density. Laying electrical wires doesn't make electricity. Unisource is currently seven-hundred-and-seventy-five megawatts short and is buying electricity from the outside area. They have plans to build more by two thousand and thirty-eight, you know, to supply that, but what's it going to look like by then? They're running into the same delays the builders have in building electricity. And I know that medical is outside of the purview, but it's a crapshoot as to, are we going to get more doctors? We don't have doctors for what we have now. Policemen, we say we have enough, but all I see are the reports of stolen cars in the Butler area that can't be taken care of. The street where I live, we have people who drive up to fifty miles an hour on a clearly posted twenty-five mile an hours street, and not once have I seen in two and a half years anyone ticketed to help slow it down. Okay? The, the school, I guess it's two schools there, at Prospector and Airway, as you said, if you go there at the wrong time of day, you're going to be in line for quite a while trying to get through that intersection. And with the change that was just made with the drainage and putting in the light at the other end of Airway, now the traffic's backed up from that light all the way to the Airway intersection at times. You know, I don't know if it's, like you said, a timing, but what's it going to be when you add another two to three thousand people? That's my comment.
Thank you. Nancy Lee Allen?
Hello. I live on Heather Avenue, which is parallel to Airway, and the view from my front door is that hospital, okay? Just so you all know where I'm coming from. Leo is my neighbor, he lives across the street, and we had a very serious crime episode in our neighborhood on Sunday night leading into Veterans Day. Theft vehicles, many were broken into, and it went on for hours, apparently. I'm most concerned, though, about the traffic on Airway, and it's not a very wide road. Where are all these cars and vehicles going to go? I also have a concern, because I took the lead when the fence got broken on Airway to this property that we're talking about. We had to call the city. They sent a special Public Works truck out, and we had a dozen neighbors out in the dark getting the tumbleweeds off of our houses, our yards. We had one house that had tumbleweeds to their roofline between them and the next house. We have tried and tried to find out who owns the property. I, when I first started this with Leo, the name on the property was Catherine Frittato, and I know her because she lives off Walupi, but she bought a house that somebody owned who allegedly had bought that property, and she and I are both members of the DAR, the Daughters of the American Revolution. So I worked on, she finally got her name off the property. Then we tried some more times to find out who owns this, because we need the fence repaired. And in January, a vehicle ran into it and broke the fence, and we've tried over and over. Finally, I went to one of those boxes that they have for Engel Homes and called them. Somebody called me back, and the information I got was, no, they don't own that property. Some guy owns it, and they will just keep buying the next phase over. Now, this all happened this year. That's not the way I'm understanding what they have presented, and I'm just a little bit concerned about all these houses, all these people, children going to school. And that's basically what I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Paul Lewis?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Paul Lewis, I live in Kingman Crossing area. And basically, my concerns will echo everybody else's. Basically, the ingress and regress, egress of the area. If there was ever any type of an emergency where Airway was closed off, the only option is to go up Eastern, you know, which is three miles through a residential area. So if you're going to add, you know, another thousand or two thousand cars in that area, Kingman just can't, Airway just can't handle that kind of increase in traffic reasonably. I mean, there's just no way. Even with the change on Eastern there, that's attracted more traffic from south of the freeway up to Airway. So you know, it's, I've already noticed just with that change, you know, increase in traffic. So you know, it's kind of, you know, growth pains the city's suffering here. Obviously, you all want to grow and get more facilities and attract better restaurants, like you were saying, and the doctors and everything else, but like you say, you've got to have the attraction for them to come. But it's like somebody else said, chicken before the egg. You know, the reason we don't have enough doctors here is because we just don't have the entertainment facilities and the lifestyles that, you know, they want. So you know, that's just the way that is. But anyway, like I say, I'm just echoing everybody else's concerns, you know, with, especially with the traffic and the ability for services to get in and out. And basically, there are no services, you know, east of Andy Devine for the whole area back there, which is the high-growth area of the city. You know, that's where all the growth is coming. And it'd be nice if we had some more services out that way. I mean, you can't buy gas out there. You can't do anything out there. You can't buy a loaf of bread or bag of milk without coming in, which is why the traffic's going to be an issue. You know, having all those people just going to the grocery store. So anyway, I don't want to bore everybody, which is echoing everybody else's concerns, but I think that should be in consideration. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have Don Knolf? Nope, maybe he left. Okay, how about anybody else? Is there anybody else who wants to come and talk?
Good evening. My name is Greg Henderson, I also live on Heather. There are a couple of terms bandied about here tonight. One was bottleneck, which is extremely appropriate. I'll let that one go at that. There's a lesson here that we, we could probably learn. And I don't know if we, if we're not paying attention, but if you look at what we've done traffic-wise with Stockton Hill Road, Andy Devine at Walupi Mountain Road, Airway- traffic-wise with Stockton Hill Road, Andy Devine at Walupi Mountain Road, Airway. I mean, there's so much traffic now. There's no place for it to go. You're adding how many homes? You know, I don't have any problem at all against Mr. Angle or anybody else making an honest buck. But we really need not to put the cart before the horse. It's, there's more and more children moving in. We already have an Angle subdivision going in right across on the other side of Airway from Heather. And what's gonna happen when- when you add 1,000 more homes out there? And how do people enter and exit? It's just gonna be a bigger problem than we already have, compounding. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else who wants to speak to the Commissioner?
One additional question.
Okay.
Ava, this is Paul Lewis. As I've heard some rumors about another freeway on-ramp and off-ramp out in that area that's gonna also service the airport areas. Is that still under consideration? And what would the timing on that be?
Do you wanna comment?
Rancho Santa Fe, which is gonna be under construction soon.
That's right. East of where you folks are.
Right.
I'm off Rancho Santa Fe, I am to the airport.
Yeah.
It'll connect along Airway as well.
Uh, what's the timing of that?
Soon. I don't- I don't have the exact date. It's gonna start-
Okay, 'cause that'll aid in the traffic problem. You know, somebody jump off the freeway and get down to Ryan or Stockton. Okay, that's all I wanted to know about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Joe Rodriguez, I live also on Heather. And my house is like the one right on the corner of Mc- Mc- McTinckock? Mc- McLeanckock? And that's like the entrance into Kingman's Crossing where all the new development they've built. Um, as far as that number four question is, I don't think they actually did any survey as far as the flooding. Um, my house, there's a wash right behind me. And so I'm one of the four houses that have the wash behind. Well, I have it on video that, um, this last rain, one of the rains we had, the way that it's all designed, uh, the property's coming from Santa Rosa Medical Center, coming down towards Airway, it all comes pitches down into a drop. And so that, whatever basins or water things that- that they did to trap the water is not working. Because, um, it's a- it's a natural river that has been created by the Angle Homes coming down that street right into the, um, wash. And it is a river. Now, I'm forced to have to get, um, flood insurance, which when we first had moved into that house, which there was no homes and it was nice and flat and clear and tumbleweeds, um, we didn't have a problem. There wasn't any problem with when we had monsoon weather, none of that. As soon as that development came in, because if you look at it, everything is channeled to come down from that main street into Airway, which goes right into the, um, wash area. So whoever would like to look at these pictures, I mean, I'd be more willing to show them, but it's- it's not, I mean, this is, we're talking flash flood, running water. And you can see it, 'cause I took the picture from that street, it coming into that area, so. The traffic, I mean, everybody's heard about that, yes. Growth, yeah, it is good to have, but without things in place and they keep talking about infrastructure, well, somebody really needs to look at a little closer the infrastructure, 'cause it's not there. I mean, it isn't, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, are we- any more questions from you guys that you wanna bring up? Statements? No? All right, I'm gonna close public discussion. And Jason, do you wanna just address any of these things?
Thank you, Chair, good evening Commissioners. So the comments and questions that I heard this evening, I will address what I can. I am not a drainage expert, but I do have our city engineer here, city engineer here that we can also address that, as well as potential Kingman Crossings Boulevard, as well as Rancho Santa Fe. So I know he had thrown out a date in the back, so I'll invite him up afterwards. With respect to the- the questions that I received, traffic, you know, coming in and out of the project, light sequences, again, as development occurs, these are things that are adjusted. The applicant is coming back with their preliminary plat, and I'm gonna explain a little bit more about it after I address these questions. Water diversion that was brought up, crime. Unfortunately, subdivisions aren't based just on, you know, where you can put them from a crime perspective. However, our police department is very well aware of some of the things that are taking place in the city. So I will certainly make myself available to anybody after this meeting. If you wanna show me what street-specific that you're talking about for speeding and so forth, I'll be more than happy to take your information, relay that on to our police department so that way we can get somebody in contact with you. Same thing with respect to where the fence is down or there's- there's a concern over a property. If you'll point that to me, I'd be more than happy to do some follow-up and research on that. Uh, with respect to this pre-plat, this pre-plat really is coming back before you for- for a couple of reasons. One is it had essentially exhausted the number of extensions it could have because of the way the subdivision ordinance is currently drafted. That is something that we are gonna be bringing back at a future date to change that. When you have large developments of this nature, where you have multiple phases, it's just not reasonable to record final plats within a two-year period when you have multiple phases across the size of a development. Unfortunately, because of the way that ordinance is written, this particular developer was put at essentially a disadvantage in having to come back before. In doing so, however, it did allow for the city an opportunity to come back and look at some of the drainage, some of the concerns that were brought forward tonight. The applicant has revised portions of this pre-plat to address some of those drainage concerns. Additional dedication for Kingman Crossing Boulevard so that we have official, uh, an additional 44 feet of area that's dedicated just for drainage purposes. And I don't wanna steal anyone's thunder here tonight, I can certainly turn it back over to the applicant. He can address some of the things that he's been in conversations with the city about to- to help improve the area that's out there, as well as our city engineer to talk a little bit more about drainage, as well as the Rancho Santa Fe extension. But if there's any additional questions, I don't think, I think a lot of them were very similar. I think we talked about Unisource earlier this evening. But again, Unisource is a private utility. They are the ones that are pre-planning and planning for their development and substations. They utilize the subdivisions that are coming in so they can provide that to their energy planners. Same thing with medical facilities and so forth as development occurs. We certainly understand that there's a need today and a need in the future. However, it's a private enterprise outside the scope of the subdivision itself. But again, I certainly will make myself available after the meeting to- to address any of the specific concerns in regards to police, traffic, crime, or the- the property in question regarding the fencing, so we can at least resolve some of those comments. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. All right, I am gonna open this up now to commission discussions so that we can talk about this issue with each other. What are some thoughts?
Can I go first?
Go for it.
All right, 'cause I kinda have firsthand knowledge of a couple of things here. So it's gonna sound like it's going one way and then it's not, but. Uh, my fiancee actually happens to live right next to a couple of the people that spoke. Uh, and my vehicle's actually one of the vehicles that got stolen on Sunday night, right? Also, uh, they go- Both my children also went to White Cliffs Middle School, so I'm extremely familiar with the traffic problems, the crime, the density, all that stuff. However, you guys are gonna get mad at me now. I don't think the answer is to not develop, I think it actually is to develop. You gotta get infrastructure, you gotta know that people are moving into that community to make better roads, make better lights, get better infrastructure there, put roundabouts in or whatever to make the traffic better. Luckily, the council and the city and the city manager, everybody's been working very hard to get those overpasses installed, they're coming, right? Both overpasses are coming to relieve area from, uh, relieve traffic from that area. I trust, and maybe I'm an optimist, right? I trust the engineers that did our general plan. I tr- you know, everyone that worked so hard and spent a lot of money on this general plan and everything going on in the city of Kingman. And I just want to trust our engineers and everything that says, hey, this is an R16 area, that's what it was designed for. Hey, let's put it in place and let's move forward as a community, right? And make sure the police infrastructure there, make sure the fire's there. And the only thing I will say, I wish I could see a park here, but I know there's- there was a design for a very large park behind White Cliffs Middle School. I do not know if that's still intact. So that's my two cents.
I know you wanna say something.
Chair, could I ask, uh, Jason a question?
Yes.
Um, Jason, when were the- the initial phase of this, when was that built out, do you know?
Just a moment.
Okay.
Chair, Commissioner Waters, with respect to the phasing, I can't tell you when it was specifically built out, but their final plats for phases A, B, C, and D, which totaled approximately 321 lots, those were all recorded between 2005 and 2023. So this has been an ongoing development. And again, the pre-plat, because of the large nature of the subdivision itself, i- it just doesn't warrant having a two-year expiration. And again, that's one of the reasons why they're back before us today.
Okay, and from the- from the very beginning, it's always been the R16 for this area when they did the first phase?
That is correct.
Gotcha. Thank you, that's- that's all I-
Well, as before, I still have the same concerns with the traffic patterns and everything. I understand the need for getting the infrastructure, but I don't think putting more troubles there are gonna increase the tr- infrastructure. I think we need to do the infrastructure, like make Airway a four-lane highway, or street. And then up to a point.
That's being required.
No, it stops right past your spot there. It goes back to two lanes.
At each phase, you're expanding it to four, it's required.
I still have the same concerns, so, that's my point.
Can we? Mike looks like he's ready to come up, maybe he can come up and talk about, uh, the proposed infrastructure improvements and how they're gonna tie into the interchanges and-
Mr. Noble's gonna make me talk. I- I think the main thing I wanted to talk a little bit about was the city's, uh, traffic impact analysis requirements that we have. The street regulations- The street regulations that, uh, council's adopted have some pretty, uh, specific rules about when a traffic impact analysis is required. And, um, it's got different levels for different, uh, size developments. This subdivision, as well as the other subdivision that was previously discussed, both had a traffic impact analysis done. The results for both traffic impact analyses indicated that the subdivision could be built without impacting existing or negatively impacting existing traffic patterns. I think the one thing that was brought up earlier that's gonna help out is eventually that, um, Kingman Crossing traffic interchange is gonna go in and that's gonna take a lot of, uh, the load off of Airway, as well as the- the new traffic interchange that's going in out on Rancho Santa Fe Parkway. Uh, you'll have another place for the traffic to go besides just Airway. I live out in Philibest- Philib- Vistabella, I guess is the name of the subdivision that's out there where the school is. Uh, I drive up and down Airway every single day. I know what the traffic looks like. Uh, as soon as those traffic interchanges go in, I probably won't be using Airway anymore. And that's probably gonna be the same for most people that use it right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding-
When the interchanges are, I guess specifically Rattlesnake, Airway's gonna be extended out to- to Rattlesnake, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, the city's plans, uh, at the Rancho Santa Fe traffic interchange are to do, uh, to extend the traffic interchange to Airway. Uh, so it'll connect Airway to the traffic interchange so that, so people that are on the east side of Kingman have an option to get on the 40 without going all the way to Stockton Hill or to Andy Devine.
Yeah. And then with each phase of this subdivision, are there gonna be any improvements or widening to Airway?
Right, they have to put in, they have to put in street improvements, curb and gutter sidewalk. You know, I think there's actually gonna be, like Tyler was saying, I think they have to add it, add another lane.
So they'll be adding a lane as part of each phase?
Right.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to point out as well, um, the city had a lot of spirited discussions with the developer about Kingman Crossing Boulevard. Uh, we worked with them together to make sure that, uh, the Boulevard's gonna be built as part of the subdivision. They won't be able to build the entire subdivision without building the Boulevard first, which will also help with the traffic patterns in the area.
Uh, Chair, can I ask you, um, do you have a- a date when this, when this, um, Kingman Crossing interchange will-
We do not, not for Kingman Crossing. We've- we've got a set date for Rancho Santa Fe. Uh, Kingman Crossing is still under negotiations with, uh, various development partners.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does anybody else have any more questions for him? No? All right, thank you.
Just a brief comment. Again, when we went to the Arizona Planner Conference, there was a lot of talk about affordable housing. It seems to be the buzzword everybody's using. It's gonna result in some changes to the city, which, you know, the public should be aware of. And it's these ADU units, which are basically like, almost like Airbnbs, but they're rentals in people's backyards. So again, I'm- I'm hesitant just because of the density of these things and then multiplying it by adding ADUs as a solution to affordable housing. It just, it makes me loathe to kind of double down on everything. That being said, unlike the other area where there's, you know, there's- there's this, you know, the showpiece of Kingman, which is what I call it, and then there's just this jarring cookie cutter subdivision right next to it. From the get-go, this little development seems to have been intended to be the R16, you know? So if you bought into that neighborhood, that's, uh, you're sure you have beautiful fields, but you must have known that the division, the subdivision is gonna extend out that way. And the city has put a lot of work into, you know, building this interchange, which I've, I'm frankly sick of hearing about, it's been so many years. It's- it's coming and they're gonna hook it up and finally get that hospital road, you know, so it won't- it won't just end out nowhere. But there's other solutions to affordable housing, which maybe the city should be looking at rather than the ADUs. I don't know how that's gonna pan out, but I can- I can just tell the city right now, I don't like the direction they're going in with the ADUs and- and hocking it to everybody. So that's why me, as a Commissioner, is a little hesitant on these things. Is A, the refusal of the developers to, to, you know, increase the, prevent overly dense developments, and also the solution to everything being some sort of Airbnb, Brazilian favela, where you have like shacks connected to each other with no setbacks. So just keep an eye on that. For right now, though, I can't see any reason, based on the general plan, to deny this particular one. It's- it's just my opinion. Thank you.
Any other thoughts from the left? No? All right, are we ready for motion? Just keep in mind that there are conditions one through eight when you make your motion.
I got it. All right, I move to approve public hearing request SB 23-006, Kingman Crossing Pre-Plat Track 1993, request for the approval of a revised preliminary subdivision plot for Kingman Crossing Track 1993. The proposed subdivision includes 1,128 residential lots and 16 parcels on properties located on the north side of Interstate 40 and west of Prospector Street. The subdivision will be developed in 13 phases-
The subdivision will be developed in 13 phases. Phases A, B, C, and D have already been recorded, along with all recommendations by the city.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote? Chair Goss, approve. Vice Chair Blair?
Deny.
Commissioner Waters?
Approve.
Commissioner Quinn?
Approve.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Approve.
Commissioner Noble?
Approve.
Motion approved. All right, so that motion has been approved. Now we need to go back to old business. That is going to be number three A, which is the public, okay, never mind, we're going to wait a second.
Now that Rancho Santa Fe exit is going to tie in to the airport, the hall room, and it's supposed to tie in to.
All right, I'm going to just give us a quick intermission.
You really can't take questions or answers?
Planning and zoning of November 13th, 2024. And we are on old business public hearing Z zero, I think, oh, it's an O. Z O two four dash zero 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 two zoning ordinance amendment.
At the bottom. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Chair. Good evening this evening. Z zero two four dash zero 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 two is a zoning code text amendment to the city's existing zoning ordinance that was adopted originally, readopted, I should say, back in 2021. Since its implementation, we have certainly come across areas that were unclear or areas that needed to be clarified, development standards added, but also through the implementation, we found some things that just didn't work. So although this is a comprehensive cleanup that's coming before you this evening, it is very, very long-winded. I'm going to key in on some of the three major areas that we're dealing with, and then I'm going to run through some of the cleanup stuff. But just to give you a little bit of background, again, this will address multiple sections of this code. So everything from section two dash five zero all the way to five dash thirty. We'll also have at the end upon if this is approved this evening, we will be changing the page numbering and numerology of it. So it's actually an easier code to reference for both staff as well as for the public. And before you this evening, again, our recommendation would be for approval to the mayor and city council. So a little bit of history on our zoning code first established back in June 14th, 1971. Seems like a very, very long time ago, but only two years before. I won't say that anymore. Re-adopted May 7th, 2001, and then the current code was adopted April 6th, 2021 under ordinance 1924. So again, tonight, we're going to address the changes in this code really do address the Scrivener's errors that we've had with the code itself, update and clarify definitions, update the code to reflect development services. Development services department, we're no longer under the fire department. So a lot of the references that you hear tonight, or if you're at least reading through, are really changing it from fire chief to the development services director, from fire department to development services department. And then we're going to amend various development standards which were inconclusive, as well as minor updates to some of our standards and our processes, some of which may have been helpful for some of the projects that we've seen recently regarding some extensions of a time. So let me kick off with one of the most important and probably largest portions of this process. And currently, our code has a citizen review process. The citizen review process is not required under the Arizona State revised statutes. With the code that we have in place is what it does do is it does require the developer to go out and actually hold two additional meetings in addition to the public hearings when they come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council. But it requires them to go out and hold two meetings to share their project with the community. Again, it's not required under Arizona State revised statutes. The public hearings do already serve for this process to accept public input. Historically, we've had a low turnout at these meetings. And I can speak for Kingman from what I've seen, but also just in general in the valley itself that held, holds these meetings received the same thing, very low turnout. Ultimately, when having this type of a process, it does include or add additional review time or delay time on bringing projects to the market. And as you're aware, development is really contingent upon being able to hit the market in timely manner, whether it be this type of a project for a subdivision like we've seen tonight or even a conditional use permit for some form of a retail type facility. So the whole purpose of really revising this is that we do already have public input through the public process, through public hearings. This does allow us to bring projects to market a little bit quicker. It does not, however, stop the developer from holding an outreach meeting. And I can tell you, you know, as projects come in and as they're coming in with and meeting with us, if we were to come across something that we felt was controversial or we felt that we needed to get some additional public input, we would certainly encourage the developer to do that. Should the developer elect not to and comes before the commission, that could be certainly something that as they're taking public input, the developer may want to take into consideration. But again, the point of tonight's amendment, as well as the cleanup, is we would actually be repealing this section, allowing just for the public hearing process, public comment process that takes place through the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council to be those particular outlets. The other large amendment that associated with this is amending code section two dash four point zero four zero. This is our approval authority of a conditional use permit. When the 2021 code was implemented, that authority transitioned from the city council down to the Planning and Zoning Commission. There has been desire to come back and revisit that. With that being the case, staff is coming back and is actually recommending that the planning commission become the recommending body to the city council. The city council would be the approval body. One of the larger changes here is that instead of bringing back extensions of time back before an appointed or an elected body, extension of times could be looked at at the director level, taking into consideration, again, development constraints, timing, funding, and things of that nature, without putting the applicant back through another public hearing process for an extension of time. So those are the three major changes associated with the CUP ordinance that we have. It does allow, add the additional layer of discretionary review as it would go back before the city council, but it does eliminate further discretionary review when it comes to an extension. One of the other major changes is looking at accessory structures. Currently, we require accessory structures of certain sizes to go through the city's site plan review process. We can look at those through the building permit process and streamline those types of reviews. And so with that, we are recommending that we remove those types of structures, especially when they're under 200 square feet, because they're already exempt from having to have a building permit. So this brings it in line with the building code. It allows it to be reviewed as an over the counter permit, just to make sure that they're meeting certain requirements. And then they can move forward with development if that's the case. Again, streamlines permitting creates consistency with the building code and it reduces redundant reviews. So now I'm going to go a little bit faster. There's a lot of changes that we're looking at here. So it is certainly in detail in your staff reports that you have with the amended sections, but we're looking at clarifying the setbacks for our attached dwellings. Currently, those setbacks are very unclear, so we're actually coming back and amending and adding clarifying language. We're adding clarifying language for residential zones that deal with daycare centers versus daycare homes, as to which is applicable in a residential zone versus which is essentially applicable in more of a commercial area. Currently, our multi-family development code is missing density caps or density requirements. And so with that, we really don't have a whole lot of purview over that. So going back to the original code, we are coming back to actually make a recommendation to where they are more in line with our C one, C two, or three, C three zones. We're amending and clarifying some building height requirements. So currently, we have height requirements that limit buildings to 50 feet when they're adjacent to a residential zone. This would allow, when they're not adjacent to a residential zone, that they could go up to 80 feet. And really, that's to account for future industrial development that's forthcoming. We anticipate that future industrial development is looking for higher buildings. We know that certainly from an Amazon perspective. They like four, four-story interior, which pays to about 65 feet before you get to a sprinkler, a sprinkler line or a curtain. Also, as we talked a little bit about tonight, accessory dwelling units. This does make a minor change to our current code, which allows it not to exceed 50% of the living area. This is consistent with state statute. I will tell you that there are future revisions coming. Accessory dwelling units is not something that the city will have a lot of local control over. Residential zones will be allowed to have accessory dwelling units by right. It is a state statute requirement, and that will be a future amendment that's coming before you. And currently, our drive-through queuing requirements, right now, if you were to come in with a drive-through, we don't have any analysis requirements, so there could be the concern of stacking impacting our public right-ofways. Also, we have unclear screening with respect to headlight buffers. And so this particular amendment will address those as well. Currently, the code has a limitation that RV storage, when it's part of a project site, is that the mini storage is limited to 10%. That was an error in the original code. It was actually the RV storage is supposed to be limited to 10% of a mini storage facility. So that will clarify that particular area as well. So currently, the way the code is written, mini storage is limited to 10% of the lot. It was something that was overlooked when the original code was established. It was unclear. I believe there have been several that have gone forward as part of policy decisions that have been made up to date. So this is just, at this point in time, adding that into our ordinance. So it still would limit the RV area to 10%, which we believe was the intent of that code.
So just, I guess it's not, I can wait, sorry.
Currently, roof and ground mounted solar is unclear in our code. So again, going back to what's allowed under state statute, especially when it comes to energy reduction, our code is being revised to address that, as well as the size limitations associated with tiny homes. One of the larger changes, I think, that will come into play here is that patio covers. Currently, it's unclear how it's written in our code with respect to encroachments. This clarifies the code that it would allow for patio covers to have five-foot side mirror setbacks, not overhang more than two and a half feet. And the overhang is measured from essentially your post to any type of property line. Clarify screening in utility cabinets. Screening, the way the code is written, it requires screening on a residential lot that's outside of a public utility easement. So then you end up starting getting these block walls around every transformer and so forth. It's not a practical application, and it really should have been meant for just mechanical equipment, such as AC condensers and so forth. Our code, again, goes back to, to correct that as well. One of the other changes, currently, the code requires parking for mini storage at one space for every thousand square feet. It's very, very onerous. If you get a 40,000 square foot building, now you're required 40 parking spaces. It creates a heat island index for developers. It requires them to put in parking well above than what would ever be needed or utilized on the site at any given point in time, in keeping with other jurisdictions, looking at what's, what's allowed from a parking perspective. We came back and we're recommending one space for every 50 units and then two spaces for a manager's or office. There are several definitions that are being amended that's within your code. It does all align with the amendments that are being put forth, put forth before you this evening. Just a quick analysis, the proposed amendment does clarify the existing code, allows for implementation and enforcement by the development services department, our neighborhood services division, allows for greater latitude and flexibility in the code's interpretation and application. It lessens restrictions that results in impacts to neighborhood services, less restrictive setbacks for sheds when they're under 200 square feet, eliminates outdated requirements that result in excessive demands on proposed development, i.e. the parking standards for mini storage, building heights for industrial zones, demonstrates code flexibility to aid in attracting new businesses, manufacturing enterprises, and aligns the code with our building code. Specifically, we're exempting sheds and playhouses as being an accessory structure. Therefore, we're not regulating those, especially when they're under 200 square feet in area. All of these amendments are being proposed to be in accordance with what's allowed under the new code currently for doing a zone text amendment. It's, it is consistent with the city's general plan, as well as other adopted plans by the city. Proposed amendments are not going to be detrimental to the public health and safety. These amendments address the demonstrated needs of the community. The amendments are also necessary to respond to substantial changes in conditions in our policies with respect to missing development standards. And lastly, the proposed amendment is consistent with other applicable provisions of our code. Public notification and any comments? We did do a public notice for this. The public notice was September 18th, advertising for our October 10th meeting. Ultimately, as you'll recall, that meeting was continued to the November 13th meeting. There's no additional department or agency comments. Staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval to the mayor and city council based on the findings outlined in your staff reports. And with that, I will answer any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Does anybody have any questions for him? No?
Thank you. I've been living it, riding it, and breathing it for several weeks, months perhaps. So I have to, I have to give some, some credit, though. This was not all me. This was a staff initiative. This was our planners on staff, our previous interim director, Michael Rodriguez, that helped craft this as well. We polished it up. We also took into consideration feedback that we have received from various developers throughout the community, others that work with us on a, on a daily basis, engineering firms, architectural firms, and so forth. So this isn't just something that we came up with. This is something that, as directed, we wanted to go back and take a look at. We needed a code that we can implement. This is not going to be the last time you see this before you. This was what we've had to date. We are going to be now going forward and looking at it on a section by section basis. There are still a lot of misrepresentations in it. However, we needed to get something back before you so we could continue working with the developers that are coming before the city today.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
When, when can we, like, the meeting, but when, when the real changes, when, when are you guys going to have those ready?
So real changes, again, are going to go on a case by case, or a section by section basis. So we are working on getting some additional staff that, that is actually very, very knowledgeable in this field. We have a new general plan that's just been recently adopted. So as we can move forward, we're looking to help, have help that can go through section by section, identify the areas that need to be changed. Once we get to that point and we have a draft, we'll actually be holding several public hearing workshops. So that way, we can get input again back from the development community and then bring it back before this body. So I wish I could give you a specific timeline. This was a big undertaking upon my arrival in July. Fortunately, we had some, some staff already working on it. But what I'd like to do is be able to bring back that next comprehensive cleanup, which really addresses the remainder of the meats and potatoes.
It's nice to see something, because we've had this code for, what, four years now?
Yeah, it was, it was April of '21. So you're looking at four years of implementation to this point, or, you know, three going on, almost four. There are sections of the code that are just not a section that we can implement, even to today. So this will certainly help staff. It will certainly help the development community to have that, essentially, the tool, the toolbox, the policies and the guides to go forward.
Chair Goss, I do have a question for Jason. Why, okay, when, when did, did we not have the ability as a board? I believe you mentioned this, to, to approve the CUPs, where we were only recommending. Was that just a few short years ago, or?
Correct. When I go back and look at the, the previous codes, it looks like it was the code that was adopted prior to 2021 that had the conditional use permits being approved solely by the city council. And so since 2021, it's come to the planning commission as the, the approval body and then, or recommending, approval and recommending body. Therefore, it didn't have to go on to the, to the city council at that point.
And the reasoning back then for moving it over to the Planning and Zoning Commission was because we were more, like, focused on this? And we were delegating some of that minutia to our, our commission? Why are we, why are we reverting that, why are we abrogating our responsibilities back to the council? I just don't, I'm not sure why we're doing that right now.
And this might be one that I do defer to our city attorney, because he's been here a little bit longer than I have.
So I think the, the change was to try and reduce maybe some of the workload with the council when it changed to delegating it back down to the, the commission. At this point, the council wants that authority back. So that's why it's changing, because that's the council's direction.
Okay, so perhaps certain developers, like we've mentioned, want to streamline things. Cutting us out of the authority of shutting down some of these CUPs would be beneficial. I don't want to be cynical, but I could see that we live, we live as a, as a commission a little closer to the planning and zoning, so we see the nuances. In theory, over time, as we serve on this commission, we get more familiar with, you know, how this works. I could see a lot of issues being fast-tracked through the council, who may not look at it as quite as hard as we do as routinely, you know? I could see some downsides to this move, is what I'm getting at.
Certainly, Chair, Commissioner Waters. Let me clarify, it still comes before the Planning and Zoning Commission. You're still going to see the conditional use permits. You're just going to be a recommending body to the city council as opposed to the actual approval body. So you'll still get to see it, you'll still get to have input. You essentially, as a body, are the eyes and the, and the feet on the ground that understand it. So then it becomes a recommendation to the council, and they either accept your recommendation. Again, they have the ability to accept it, deny it, or impose additional conditions.
So Chair Goss, Jason, in your experience, having worked in this, you know, field for a while, would that reduce the, the care that these developers, you know, tend toward, toward coming to these meetings and preparing and presenting to us if they know that, in effect, we're just like, we're a second step to the actual decision? I mean, it seems like we're kind of diminishing our impact as a commission by, by removing some of this authority.
You know, I think it has a lot to, like, tonight's a perfect example, though. We have, we had a pre-plat that was presented to us that meets all the conditions of the code, the general plan, and this commission denied it.
Yeah, there's the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. And we're here as citizens, not as engineers and developers. We're here right now to try and put our two cents in as residents.
Compliance with the city code, not, not what.
If you look, yeah, if you listen to the, or you read the general, the general plan, a lot of it is in keeping with the city's goal or the spirit of the community. There's, there's that type of language in there. And we have the authority to shape the way our community grows, which is a pretty, pretty big authority, which apparently, right now, is getting diminished a little bit. So I'm a little concerned about just giving away some of our authority. I understand that we're commissioned by the city council, but at the same time, I don't really understand what this is for, if it's not just to grease the skids for developers.
Well, let me, let me just jump in real quick to tell you, too, that, I mean, on the whole, we are a recommending body. Like, there's very little that we do, if anything, that might have been the only thing, that we, we actually do autonomously without city council. So that, I mean, basically, our job in general is to be a recommending body. And in that case, we did have final authority in that area. And I, I, I see it as them just saying, hey, you know, can we do this in general? You being our, like, our eyes and our ears on the ground, be our recommending body, and then we're going to be the ones who get the final say on everything, you know? And I, I can see their viewpoint in that in a way, because they are the, like, elected officials, like, ultimately by the people, you know? And so giving them the final authority in this area, where they pretty much have the final authority in every area that we do anyway, you know?
So they can decommission us, or whatever they want to do with us. But at the same time, we're also talking about taking away the public meetings from the public, you know, which I understand may be a delay to developers. And we're also talking about, you know, taking their approval one step away from planning and zoning to where we're just chiming in, you know? So I just, I, I'm on board with the changes to the title of development services from, you know, the, the other title changes. A lot of the other changes make sense to me. Strongly pushing ADUs into every corner of the, of the, the city, I think that penal, it's regressive. It penalizes people with smaller lots, because suddenly, they have, in effect, multi-tenant apartment complexes right next to them, whereas somebody that has acreage doesn't suffer that, that sort of fate. There's nothing they can do about it. So there, there's some changes here that's not just Scrivener updates. It seems like these are pretty big changes, and I just hope the commission is thinking about this, you know, what we want to do with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, does anybody else have questions for Jason? No? All right, you're good for the second.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure you'll come back. All right, I just want to open this up to public comment real quick. If any of the three of you would like to come and tell me anything, you are more than welcome to. Come on up.
This is staff on queuing for, Scott McCoy. I live in Kingman for a long time. On queuing and drive-throughs, you said something to the effect that it was going to be handed over to the engineer. Can you expand on that for me just a little bit, on your changing?
Certainly, Commissioner Chairman. The, the change that's being made is currently the code only says you have to have six spaces for, for queuing purposes. However, if you bring in a Starbucks, a Starbucks typically has a much larger queuing. You bring in a Dutch Bros, much larger queuing, or they need dual lanes. In-N-Out's a good example, how much queuing you need, because it actually queues out into the right-of-way. So what this does is it allows for the city engineer to actually now ask for a queuing analysis and implement what's requested or required out of that queuing analysis from a recommendation standpoint. So it gives staff the ability to ensure that we're not impacting our public right-of-ways when we do have those types of uses. And again, it's only associated with drive-throughs.
Several years ago, when I was on P and Z, we, I thought implemented that all drive-through fast food areas were to queue all the, on their own private property and not use public right-of-ways to do that. So has that changed?
Correct. That actually is still the same. But the problem with it is without having something in the code to hold the developer accountable for. So let's just take In-N-Out, for example. In-N-Out queues out into the public right-of-way. We have no teeth from an enforcement perspective to go out there and say, you've got to come back. You've got to make some changes. You've got to do some internal queuing chains, something of that nature, so we can keep them from going out. We're trying to avoid that in advance by getting a queuing analysis upfront, because currently, in today's code, it's not required. It's not required that we have a queuing analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Any of you two? No? All right. Okay, I'm going to close public comment and open it up for commission discussion. Go.
I think I've said everything I could say, actually.
All right, do we have a motion, then?
I'll make a motion to adopt what the changes are recommended.
You just have to read the little red thing.
For Z zero two four dash zero 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 two, planning ordinance amendment.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote? Chair Goss? Approve. Vice Chair Blair?
Approved.
Commissioner Waters?
Denied.
Commissioner Noble?
Approve.
Commissioner Quinn?
Approve.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Approve.
Motion approved. All right, this was fun, guys. Now we are down to announcements by commission members. This is limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Do we have any of those? No? All right. Any requests for anything else? All right. Then we're adjourned.